9 o'clock. All right. Good morning, everybody. It is Friday, October 13th, for those who have Triskotecophobia. It is the meeting of the Palm Beach County Planning Commission. May we get a roll call, please?
Sarah Pardue.
Present.
John Carr. Rick Stopek.
Here.
Barbara Roth.
Here.
Dagmar Braas.
Here.
Verissa Laudas.
Present.
Penny Pompey. Sam Kalindo.
Here.
Lori Vennekar.
Here.
Kylie Harper Larson. Ankur Patel.
Present.
Angela Van. Brian Stenberg.
Present.
David Searle. We have Coram.
Thank you so much. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay. Proof of publication.
Good morning, and yes, Chair, we do.
Thank you, sir. Any postponements? I don't believe. Okay. And approval of the agenda? Consideration of the minutes? I have looked over the minutes. I don't see any issues. Do any of my colleagues have any concerns with the minutes of the last meeting?
No.
If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting.
Thank you, Lori. Second? Second, Sam? Sam? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Chair, I'm sorry. Also, there could be a vote on adoption of the agenda.
Pardon?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second. There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Comments by the public on non-agenda items? I do not have any. Are there any out there that didn't get submitted? Okay. Good. Comments by the Chair? Really nothing at the moment. Just other wish everyone well for the upcoming weekend. And rumor has it, we're going to have nice weather starting on Monday. So those of you who got monsooned on the way in, hopefully by next meeting, it'll be fall weather here. But otherwise, the... Nothing much that impresses the Chair at the moment. We'll get to that later. Okay, Kylie's here. Good morning, Kylie. Great. Okay, so having said that, let's just roll into item 3A1. This is the Lake Haven, I believe. PUD, formerly known as Crestwood PUD. And who shall we hear from first on this?
We will begin with the presentation by the applicant, followed by staff.
Okay, we got John Sapo, Colter Group. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Ken Tumuth, Urban Design Studio, here on behalf of Colter, who is the contract purchaser of the subject site. I'm going to give a short presentation. I missed... My colleague, Mr. Woolsey, is going to get up and go through the details of the project.
Very good.
First thing, thank you for having me again here today. This is actually the third time that this board has heard this project. You may know it as Lake Haven, which is its current name. It's been known as Crestwood, and then also Fleming. This board has been moved forward on this project several times. It's a 446-acre parcel of land in the western part of Palm Beach County, adjacent to Arden. So it's a piece just next to Arden on the east side. Thank you. And then it has been in front of this Planning Commission for a text amendment to extend the bounds of GAPO. You approved that back in October of '21, an unanimous vote. And then it was in front of you in October of 2022, where you approved a land use change for an LR2 use. So why are we back in front of you today? Because the request in front of you is an LR2. The program has changed a little bit over the course of time. Initially, when we were in front of you, we were in front of you for an 892 age-restricted community. What Mr. Woolsey is going to present to you today is a 534-unit community, which is not age-restricted. 480 are single-family homes, and 54 are townhomes. Those townhomes are an important component. Those townhomes, I wish Ms. Von was here, because they are for-sale workforce housing units to be built on-site. Also, Colter has made that commitment. Also, there is going to be 47,000 square feet of commercial proposed, of office and commercial. And then finally, we are dedicating what the county is looking for, is a civic site potentially to be used for a fire station. And how did we get here? We went to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners postponed us. The District Commissioner then worked with us on what her vision is for the site. And her vision was not for age-restricted. It was for regular development or regular housing. And that's how we got to where we are today. So what is in front of you is the same request that you unanimously approved back in 2022 for this subject site. I'm going to ask Tyler to walk through all the details, and again, happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Ken. Tyler Woolsey, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the applicant. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And I'll be brief with this, but walk you through some of the technical components. For context, you're seeing the property here, as Ken mentioned, in the central western sector portion of the county. A little bit more context showing you some of the surrounding nearby municipalities. And getting into a little bit more detailed context, showing you some of the surrounding communities, Arden to our west, Deer Run to our north. The request in front of you today is twofold, for a comprehensive plan amendment, looking for the support for the transmittal of the expansion of GAPO, as well as the land use change from RR10 to LR2. We do have a concurrent zoning application in process with the county zoning division. Going back into the process, as Ken had mentioned, this is the third time you'll be seeing this application. Back in 2021, you saw this application for the initiation of that comprehensive plan text amendment for the expansion of GAPO. And then more recently, in November of '22, you saw this same plan, or this same request, for LR2 future land use associated with that 892-unit age-restricted plan. In both of those cases, we saw unanimous recommendation approval from this board. The technical request on the table today is looking for the change from RR10 to LR2, as you see there. And staff is recommending approval with a number of conditions. We've coordinated closely with Planning Division staff in our agreement with all of the conditions, including conditions to provide the 10%, those 54 workforce housing units for sale on-site, as well as a condition requesting for a public open space trail, a 50-foot-wide open space trail on the north portion of the property, similar to what was provided with Arden. So we're in full agreement with those conditions. And as mentioned, staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone from staff going to speak at this point? Who do we got?
Good morning. Bryce Van Horn with the Planning Division. So yes, you did see this before for initiation, and again, for the future land use amendment and text amendment. Again, this is the Lake Haven PUD, Future Land Use Atlas, text amendment request. As you may recall, the application was before the Planning Commission, November 2022, as Mr. Woolsey said, and was called Crestwood PUD at that time. At that time, the applicant was proposing the 892 age-restricted, single-family units. And when the amendment was presented to the board for transmittal, the board expressed concerns over the development scenario and postponed the item to allow the applicant to address those concerns. Subsequently, the applicant... The application was revised by the applicant to what you have before you today. And again, as presented by the agent, the subject site, 446 acres, located approximately 1.7 miles west of Seminole Pratt Whitney Road, on the north side of Southern Boulevard. The site is to the east of and adjacent to the boundaries of the 3,000-acre Glades Area Protection Overlay, also known as the GAPO. It's the purple-stripped area that you see on the screen. More on the GAPO a little bit later. The site is within the rural tier. The amendment is a request, again, for a change from the rural residential, one unit per 10 acres, future land use, that's RR10, to low residential, two units per acre, or LR2. And the applicant is proposing, again, 534 units, of which 480 are proposed to single-family, 54 proposed on-site workforce housing as townhomes. And the request also includes a commercial pod with 47,000 square feet, which requires revisions to Unified Land Development Code, which the applicant has submitted a privately-initiated code amendment request for. For this amendment to proceed, there's four components, which include comp plan text amendments for, one, expanding the Glades Area Protection Overlay to the east. You see the GAPO highlighted here in purple. And the expansion would extend to the subject site. Two, designating the site as a limited urban service area, also known as a LUSA. And these two sites in Peach, within the GAPO, are currently designated as LUSAs. Three, revising the rural tier objective and policy. And four, of course, proceeding, processing of the future land use amendment. So since the county's comprehensive plan does not allow the LR2 future land use on the subject site, the proposed accompanying text amendments to the county's comprehensive plan, future land use amendment, and map series are necessary and are as follows. You can see the specific changes, Exhibit 1B. It's on Page E4 of the report. First is to revise a GAPO policy and the map series, Special Planning Areas Map, to expand the boundaries of the GAPO eastward to incorporate the 446-acre subject site within the overlay. Then to revise the rural tier objective and policy to allow for the limited urban service area within the GAPO and within the rural tier, and allowing for planned unit development on the site. And then finally, to revise two map series maps, the Managed Growth Tier System Map and the Service Area Map to depict the site as a limited urban service area. So all of this has to happen together for the applicant to attain the LR2 land use designation. Again, surrounding the site to the north, Deer Run. This is a rural residential subdivision, five-acre lots with RR5 future land use. That is also in the rural tier. To the east is the nearly 500-acre property known as the Leonard Property, with Fox Trail. Further east, another rural residential subdivision, five-acre lots. Both the Leonard Property and Fox Trail has an RR10 future land use designation. I'm sorry, except for Fox Trail. Fox Trail is RR5. Both are, of course, in the rural tier. And to the south is, of course, Southern Boulevard and the South Florida Water Management District, West Palm Beach Canal, and the District Stormwater Treatment Area, or STA, that's within the municipal limits of the Village of Wellington. Adjacent to the west, again, you've heard a lot about Arden. 1,200-acre Arden PUD. That has an LR2 future land use designation. That is also within the GAPO, approved and developing with 2,334 units. Okay, so back to the GAPO, the Glades Area Protection Overlay. So as previously mentioned, the subject site is located adjacent to the east of the Glades Area Protection Overlay. So the overlay, shown here in purple stripes, and is comprised of over 3,000 acres. So in 2004, the board adopted text amendments creating the overlay. It was a barrier to development of urban intensities and densities proceeding west into the Everglades agricultural area, or also known as the EAA, specifically to protect those lands designated with agricultural production, or AP, future land use. And at that time, Wellington was considering a voluntary annexation of the Arden Property. Back then, it was known as Palm Beach Aggregates Property or Highland Dunes. Part of the intent of the overlay was to prevent the voluntary annexation of that property into the Village of Wellington, where the municipal limits are located to the south, southern Boulevard. So subsequent GAPO amendments identified the portion of the overlay east of the L-8 canal, which you see there, running north-south, kind of in the middle of the GAPO. Designated that portion east as a limited urban service area, or LUSA, in order to allow for development of Arden as LR2 and required restrictive covenants from the property owner to not pursue annexation. A little background on the central western communities. The site was included in a multi-year planning process called the Sector Plan. And that plan was to provide guidance for future development while addressing land use imbalances within what is known as the 50,000-plus-acre central western communities. This map shows the boundaries of the past Sector Plan, which looked at the entire area with a focus on the large undeveloped parcels to address regional needs, including the subject site. So the combined Fleming and Leonard properties were contemplated for a large employment center at that time. The Sector Plan was adopted, was challenged, and ultimately repealed. After the repeal of the Sector Plan, the board directed staff to continue with an overlay known as the Central Western Communities Overlay for the former Sector Plan area to incorporate some of those key planning concepts from the Sector Plan. That overlay amendment effort contemplated a low-density village center development for the Fleming property, at .8 units per acre. The board, however, ultimately ended that CWC amendment. However, as previously before the board, staff's assessment for the current proposal is that the request for two LR2 is compatible with the surrounding land uses and existing development, with the proposed density comparable to the existing adjacent Arden PUD. In addition, the amendment is appropriate, given the overall context of the area, the history of multiple planning efforts to address future development for this property within the central western communities area, and is consistent with the purpose of the Glades Area Protection Overlay to focus development east of the L-8 canal. So the GAPO as a mechanism to allow for eastward low-density residential development is a viable mechanism for the proposed changes compatible with the surrounding area. As part of staff's recommendations of approval, we're recommending the following conditions. Those are in the exhibit. Sites limited to 480 single-family and 54 townhouse units for the residential pod, 23,500 square feet of retail, and 23,500 square feet of office for the commercial pod. That's the total 47,000 square feet. That they provide a minimum of 10% of the units as on-site workforce housing. That would be the 54 townhomes. Provide a minimum 50-foot-wide open space trail corridor south of the future Okeechobee Boulevard right-of-way extension. That would be connecting to the Arden Plan Trail Network. Four, to provide for potential vehicular pedestrian connections to that future extension of Okeechobee to the north of the project. And finally... And finally requiring, just requiring that the future land use amendment and the zoning applications be considered at the board for adoption at the same time. The staff is recommending approval with those conditions, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. Before we get into questions from my colleagues, we just have one comment card. Gentleman, Mr. Mark Perry, if you'd like to come up to... No. I thought it says 3A1. I beg your pardon. It looked like a one there. Never mind. We'll come back to that. In that case, either my eyes are getting worse, or Mr. Perry's penmanship, or both of us. But that's okay. All right. Having said that, now, let me open it up to questions from my colleagues on the dais here. I'll start with Dagmar to the right.
Good morning, everyone. You know, this has been before us already, you know, in less than two units to the acre, you know, and the commercial and whatnot. You know, I guess we can swallow that. My question is, what happens on the other side of the L-8 canal? I mean, do we get to expand GAPO so they can just continue to develop LR? Or is there already a special designation on that where we cannot go west of that L-8 canal?
So the comp plan policies for west of the L-8 canal is limited to the EDC, which you'll hear later from Maria, and also RR10, rural residential, one unit per 10 acres. So that is supposed to be, that canal is supposed to be the demarcation between the urban densities and the EAA with AP lands.
Okay. But in the future, you know, since we have this little domino effect where it's all, you know, two units to the acre, can somebody come forward with language to jump that L-8 and try to make that LR2 as well? Or is there like a state mandate that says, hands off?
Well, it's in the comp plan, and it's pretty strong language. But, you know, we do...
But that makes you feel comfortable.
We do have private text initiation process, and, you know, someone could come in and request a change.
So it can potentially just keep going on and on and on?
Yes, but this one is expanding eastward instead of westward. So this is expanding further east.
But now that all the land is spoken for, with, you know, Fleming being the last piece, now the developers will probably be looking to see, let's go in the other direction, to see what's available. I mean, it is a possibility. Just change that ULDC, and we can keep going.
And there still is a Leonard property that's agriculture next to the Fleming property. So, you know, there are a few still vacant pieces here and there.
All right, thank you.
Well, and just to clarify, if you look on the west of the canal where the purple stripes are, that's the west part of the GAPO. All of that, what you see, which looks like water, is the L-8 reservoir. All of that is owned by the South Florida Water Management District. That's the reservoir, which is most of the east-west part of the GAPO. The remaining portions are the FPL, Western County Energy Center, and then the 138 acres of the EDC that you see there, south of the reservoir. Later on the agenda, you'll hear the text initiation request for some of the other property south of the EDC, and a little bit, little portion in the northeast corner of that EDC. Four EDC also. So that requires text amendments to amend the policy to allow that to happen. But that's pretty much the remaining lands, for the most part, west of the L-8 canal, in the GAPO.
Thank you.
All right. Question for staff. When you do the calculation of 1.2 per acre as a net, does that include commercial space and the workforce housing? Or is that just taking the single-family homes into consideration?
The 1.2 is a gross, is a gross figure, over the entirety of the 446 acres.
Okay, so theoretically, the true square footage is actually going to be less. The density will be less, because they've allocated portions to the WFEH and to the commercial.
Right. I mean, the net density for the actual areas that are going to be dealt with residential is obviously going to be a little bit higher. There's going to be some civic space. It's going to be proposed to be dedicated to the county. There's the eight acres for the commercial pod. But the comprehensive plan...
I understand.
I can answer that question if you'd like, because I thought that question might come up.
That's fine. I got my answer. I'm good. All right. My second question was, you did a commercial of 23.5 and 23.5 for office and retail, but then you're putting a language in here that says they can change it based on equivalent trips?
Yes. So the total square footage is 47,000 for the commercial.
Right, but won't the trips be different for office as opposed to retail?
Right. To meet our policy 35D, the, you know, they can adjust those figures for the 23,500 for each of those, as long as those trips don't exceed the trips for the total that was calculated for the 35D long-range traffic analysis. So that's the equivalent trip part. And we have traffic engineering. Dominic is here. He can maybe clarify if you need...
And if I could add, the reason why we do that is so that if they do want to add a little bit extra square footage of one versus the other, we're not having to come back before you and having to do a whole amendment to revise that condition of approval. So provide some flexibility based on that total trip number for them to have a little wiggle room through the process.
Okay. My question also is about the ULDC text amendment, where you're planning to change the PUD language from 1% to 5%. Will that affect, in the future, every PUD that comes in front of us?
I might let Ken address that a little bit too, but that's a privately-initiated ULDC amendment that the applicant has submitted to the zoning division. Currently, as written, that would affect all PUDs. You know, ultimately, what staff recommends will come later. That will be through the zoning division. But you are correct, yes. Currently, as written, it affects all PUDs. And again, that's not in effect yet. That's proposed. But everything will be required to be at the board at the same time.
All right. For now, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Bryce, who keeps tabs on that trip generation number? Does it just go back and forth between traffic and planning to make sure it does not exceed the number?
Yes. Through the zoning application, that's, you know, they can't, they'll have a condition. If adopted, they'll have a condition limiting them to those trips. The zoning application that's running concurrently, or any future amendments to that zoning application will have to comply. And that will be required through the zoning process also.
So to follow up, would zoning in any way be able to change that number, to raise it? Or is this a secure maximum on trips?
No. It will be adopted, it would be adopted as part of the ordinance for the future land use amendment. So any zoning actions must comply and be consistent with that condition in the future land use amendment ordinance. That condition would also be carried forward in the zoning application. So, you know, there's no variance through the zoning process from a condition in the comp, on a future land use amendment ordinance that's adopted as part of the comp plan.
Thank you. That's the magic word, no variance available. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Now, starting at the other end, Sam, anything? Verissa? Nothing? No? Tyler, anything?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm excited that the project has come back up and is listening to our representation on the county commission, and also many times where I've expressed the need for workforce housing. I do have a question that I would like staff to give addition on. And it relates to E4, Page E4. The proposed text and map series amendments. I'm just trying to understand the arbitrary numbers that have been put in here. And it goes to Dagmar's conversation. goes to Dagmar's conversation. We, we have a change from 2.25 miles west to 1.75, and then we have extending approximately 2.4 miles. Because I live near the area, and I pass by often, I'm very familiar with the properties that are, are west of the subject site, there still are, there's still land that can be used, that is not current, I mean, it's currently, you know, some, some of it semi-agriculture, there are some, some small homesteads, there are folks that their kids catch the bus right beside the LR8 canal because I see them, okay? Ranchettes, I would say. And that's property to, you know, just say, oh, well, the EAA starts there. No, the welcome sign for the EAA is at the intersection of State Road 80 and County Road 880. That's the boundary that the farmers acknowledge as what we say where your food comes from. So all the way to that point, I'm trying to understand where these numbers don't actually encompass to that intersection. We have conservation areas that are across the street with South Florida Water Management District. We have conservation areas that are in the Village of Wellington, so I don't understand why in this, and it's part of this project, why we're just going 1.75 and 2.4, and then when they got to come back, because it's going to happen, okay? There's land that's there, and when this project goes through, probably eventually the Leonard project goes through, and we build out to what is the accessible that's on that frontage, it's coming west. I want us to, to understand why this is being, these numbers are being given to us, if there's, there's land.
I can jump in on that one, and then Bryce has anything to add. So, the numbers that you're seeing, the mileage figures changing, the 1.75, the 2.5, that's to account for the frontage of the application here is 0.4 miles. So there's no extension westward at all. So originally, it had the two miles west cited, which is now stricken, now it's 2.4 miles because the eastern boundary is 0.4 miles further to the east. So there's no adjustment to the western boundary. These figures are just accounting for that movement, 0.4 miles to the east.
There actually is, in the copy that I've been presented, it's on line 1, 2, 3, 4, almost over to the right, and it says, "Beginning approximately 1.75, stricken, 2.25 miles west of Seminole Pratt Whitney Road."
Right, so originally, the 2.25 miles west of Seminole Pratt Whitney was the end of Arden's development. So now you'll see that figure is reduced by 0.4 because it's now shifted eastward closer to Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. So there's no adjustments to any western boundaries, this is just accounting for an eastward movement of the boundary, 0.4 miles east closer to Seminole Pratt Whitney Road.
Okay, and I'll come back to my original thought, but where does 1.75, where on the, on the map does that land? Is that just the subject site?
Yes, so the eastern boundary of the subject site is 1.75 miles west of Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. So this is just reflecting that boundary shift to encompass this project.
Folks, to the east, there is open land, and this is going to come back up, it's going to waste our time. We need to look at Sem Pratt and that open land that's there, it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to come back up. I'm proud that there are still active farmers on the ground that's right next door to this, and I want to continue seeing it that way. But this property, in the time that I have been here, was also actively farmed, okay? And it's come before us now. And I want to see, I want to see single-family housing, I want to see workforce housing, but I also don't want to sit up here and waste our time, time after time after time. I think we need to look at changing this boundary, okay? Because it will creep further west, westward. The other thing is, is why are we not addressing anything else? Is it just because it's independently initiated text amendment and nothing from the county?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's because the other property hasn't applied.
Okay.
And force a change or something.
Okay.
Kylie, are you finished?
I, I just wanted to understand more about the text amendment, the way that the project is being presented with the staff assessments and the conditions. I think it's, it's smart, and I just want to make sure that as we progress westward, that we do it consciously.
Thank you. Yeah. Bart, did you have any information, or did you...
What point of, may I have a...
Well, I wanted to see if Lori had any questions first, unless she had point of information.
No, no, a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, just to, to my colleague, Commissioner Harper Larson, is there a language that you would suggest as part of this application to make that a more secure issue? Is there something that you would add at this time as a condition?
Attorney, is that allowed?
I was just to say, I don't know if that, I don't know if we can encumber this.
I would say no.
Okay, all right.
Then, at the end, I will make a recommendation to the staff that we look at this.
Okay, fair enough. I'm sorry, Lori.
I have a, I have a quick question. Have you spoken to any farmers in the area to discuss this project, sir?
Question for the applicant.
A question for the applicant, my apologies.
Sure.
Sure, I mean, there, the, the site has, has different farmers on it over the course of time. Currently, the, currently, the last conversation we had, I know that Mr. Leonard, the property immediately to the east, I did speak to his representative about two years ago, and he told me that he plans on farming for as long as he can. That, that's all I can add to that, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Maynard.
It's interesting that Commissioner Harper Larson stated that the EAA sign is at the corner of the State Road and the County Road. Because the, in the agricultural reserve, it's confusing because people are wondering why the welcome to the ag reserve is on Lyons Road and not at the corner of the Turnpike and the State Road. And I was told because the county puts the signs on the county roads. So it would have been nice to, I did speak to, to Adam Putnam years ago, and I tried to start to ask for a, the state to put a sign at the corner of the Turnpike and Atlantic to make it more clear where the ag reserves started. But then we haven't, didn't, we couldn't pursue that, and, and then we had a different Commissioner of Agriculture come in. Interesting, so I think maybe that's why the sign is there and not on the State Road. But in any case, I have a question about the change in density and intensity that there is. First, it started out with 892 age-restricted units, and now we have the single-family and the, the commercial. So how did that impact the traffic on the State Roads 80 and that, to the traffic engineering? If you could explain, how did that impact the change in density and intensity?
For the record, Dominic Simms with the traffic, previously, when that project was approved, there, there were enough capacity in terms of daily on Southern Boulevard. Now that the change in density and intensity will increase the number of trips, so now the problem that poses is that on Southern Boulevard, that there, there's one segment right now that is currently over capacity. And as per policy 3.5D, that amendment cannot receive approval, simply put, because the policy clearly states that if a segment is over capacity, and the proposal impact on that segment is significant, then that amendment must not receive approval. So that's the problem that we have, we're actually facing right now. But I believe that, that that situation is going to be taken care of because the long-range and transportation plan is going to be, I mean, is expected and to be adopted by, by the TPA board the next week. So meaning, in order for the change, for the amendment to be, receive approval for policy 3.5D, that segment will need to be widened from six-lane to eight-lane. So I, to my understanding, that the eight-lane is going to be implemented in the long-range transportation plan next week. So I don't think there should be a problem.
Which goes to my next question about the timeline for the expansion. I use that road often to go out to Belgrade and to the South County Mental Health Center, I'm the president there. So I go out there all the time to Belgrade. So for the people who are using that road all the time, when's the expansion going to happen? The TPA must know their, for their long-range, the, the date, the year?
That I do not know.
Oh, maybe we'll know next week when it comes up in front of the TPA?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, well, I, the, the, this project does appear to be compatible, and it's a good transition, it's compatible, it's next to Arden, and that's where it's sandwiched in between. It, it does appear compatible, just the concerns with the traffic, but I guess they're working on that, just like everywhere else, the infrastructure.
Well, that is correct. Well, like I said, the only problem that actually remains is the widening of the segment from Seminole Pratt to Banks, because right now, the segment is a six-lane divided, and the amendment will not be in compliance with policy 3.5D, unless, of course, the segment is being widened. But right now, we do not have any absolute certainty as to when the segment is going to be widened.
So they haven't even done a PDNE study there yet?
I do not know.
The TPA, the state?
Actually, yes. The state actually had considered all avenues during an action plan that they actually conducted on, in 2016, I believe, for Southern Boulevard. And the, the, the traffic needs were actually projected and based on the demands. And that segment was foreseen to be widened to eight, to eight lanes when funding becomes available. So now, like I said before, if TPA were to be agreed to the needs, then the segment will be prioritized to get funded.
Okay, we'll look for that, thank you very much.
May I please have a follow-up question?
Sure.
So, just in order to, to figure out where that egg and that chicken is, with that failed segment of road that needs to be made into eight lanes from six lanes, they're still allowed to go forward and do their development, it just, it's on a piece of paper somewhere that says they're failing capacity, but they can move forward with their development, no matter how bad the traffic is.
Mr. Chair, if I can have a minute, maybe I can make it a little, this is a very complicated thing, I would try to make it kind of Ken-proof, which is a little bit dumber for me. So basically, there is a segment of road on the TPA transportation plan, that basically, what it said was, it said that on Seminole, excuse me, on Banks Forest Road, the eight-laning is to the west of Banks Forest Road. It didn't really give a good termination point. Doesn't make any sense that it would have terminated at Banks Forest Road, that it would have terminated at Seminole, which is the next big road. I mean, why would you terminate, go from eight-lane to six-lane at an entrance to a golf course community? So the, so our traffic engineer who's in the audience and the staff have been working diligently with the Department of Transportation and the TPA, and everybody recognized that, they, they actually heard it at their board in September, the TPA board, as an informational item, that that really should have been eight lanes instead of six lanes, and then is officially in front of their board on October 19th. So, yes, on October 19th next week. So we've met, we have all the criteria, we've, with that, we passed the 3.5D, and our traffic engineers are getting into more detail, but bottom line is, it was said west of, west of Banks Forest Boulevard, it should have went to Seminole Pratt when we meet that criteria. Hope that helps.
And if, and if I could just respond, I mean, I'm not even really focusing exactly on this project, Ken, I'm just trying to understand overall, because getting here this morning was really a pain on Jog Road and Point and Beach Boulevard and what, so it was not specifically for this project, it was development in general, thank you.
Well, whatever it's worth, when I lived in Wellington in the 80s, there was two lanes on Southern Boulevard, and there weren't no traffic lights until you got to Belgrade.
Quick question, if I may.
One more question, yes.
Yeah, one last question, from staff, from engineering. I've seen it many a times on the zoning board, that developers put up their percentage, if there is a percentage here for this road expansion, and turns out that the state and the counties have never come up with their money. They earmark it, but there's never a pool of funds for it. So it's follow-up with their, with what they were, where they were going with it, since it is a chicken and egg, is there going to be funds enough if, if it's passed? When you say that they accelerate its approval, I mean, accelerate its priority, is there funds available to do this? Or not for years?
Are you referring to Southern Boulevard? Right now, no. To my knowledge, I do not know.
It could be years.
It could be years.
Yeah.
And probably will be.
That, that's where my concern is.
Okay.
But even though it's not that much of a road for them.
All right.
Good morning, Kashid Mahyoudin, with Planning Division, if I may add. This is in the SIS cost feasible plan, which is Strategic Intermodal System. We have five roadways in the county, Turnpike, I-95, State Road 80, Beeline, and US-27. So it's a different part of money, and whenever the money is available in the statewide basis, they advance those projects. So yeah, DOT has put it in the cost feasible plan, which they are going to adopt in December of this year, and that's why DOT requested the TPA to modify the, ensure the correct segment, which is from Pratt Whitney to the Palm Beach Boulevard, not from Banks Forest to the Palm Beach Boulevard. And in that case, if the TPA adopts it on October 19th, this will not be an issue. But if TPA doesn't, then this amendment won't be seen by the board on November.
I, I have a question then, at that point, when we have competing needs for dollars for all of these road expansions which have to occur at some point in time, what is the protocol from the state and/or the county? Is it first application in versus last application in, or is there a hierarchy to prioritize the need, and then who pursues that need? Assuming our county lobbyists would have to lobby the state for the funds at that point, or is it first in, first out?
State has statewide money for SIS facilities, which has the top priority. So whenever the state has the money in any of their districts, whenever they come up, they put immediately to SIS. Yes, the top priority does not compete with funds of the other roads.
Okay.
Separate part.
All right. All right. No other questions from my colleagues on the dais, I will entertain a motion on 3A1. Lake Haven?
A motion to approve the application with the conditions that staff has provided.
Commissioner Maynard. Second from, Sam Caliendo. Okay, thanks. Any discussion on the motion? Unkar.
My concern is the privately initiated text amendment to the ULDC for the PUD change. The planned urban development is supposed to be not for the rural tier, theoretically, it's supposed to be for urban development. There's a reason why commercial is limited, because when you're doing a PUD, the idea behind the PUD is it's for homes and it's for, or townhouses or multifamily, whatever the design is, but it's primarily residential. A PUD is not supposed to be for commercial. What this allows it to do is increases the capacity even anywhere on the east side. So if somebody comes in with a five-acre parcel and decides to put a PUD in for a five-acre parcel, they can theoretically use that 5% number instead of the 1%, where it changes how and what they can do with that. I mean, I know, and then... I mean, and then on top of that, there'll be bonuses and other stuff that's set into play, which can expand that further. So I have a concern that this is affecting every single possible PUD. If there was a way to kind of localize it to this, I mean, I'm very comfortable with this project, because Arden is, you know, is much more denser than this. So this is definitely, and with the workforce housing, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I think they've done a really fantastic job on that. The commercial aspect is what I'm sort of afraid of. It's fairly large on this project too, but I'm comfortable with it on this project. However, I'm not comfortable of doing a text amendment that affects everything in the county, because this affects everything in the county, from 1% to 5%. So I am not comfortable with that.
If I could real quick, so the ULDC revisions aren't the purview of this board. We can definitely express your concerns to the board related to it. You would be voting on the land use designation change and conditions of approval. So just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that.
I understand, but it's going hand in hand. So we want to make sure that if there's a recommendation that's going through from this board, I want to make sure the BCC understands that that's an important part of this.
Definitely, and I think that's what I was trying to express, is that we would, we could tell the board your concerns related to that.
But can we put it in a motion?
It could be, or we could include as part of.
Well, can we designate that this is a standalone and is not meant to be?
You could simply, you could do a motion to approve with.
Without approving the.
You're not approving it. You could say a motion to approve the project, and then with language to be passed to the BCC that we are concerned with the privately initiated ULDC amendment.
I'll amend my motion, if you'd like. I'll amend it to state exactly to provide the language to approve it, but we're concerned with the issues with the ULDC and to put the language into that motion.
So the issue then is that because it's not site-specific, the 5% is what you're saying, that's your concern?
That is correct. If it was site-specific, I'd be comfortable with it. Because it's not site-specific, I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Fair enough. Commissioner Vinecker?
We understand what we are voting on, that we're concerned with the site-specific. And it's not site-specific if it goes to ULDC for amendment.
Right, so he's saying his concern with the ULDC revisions is that it could potentially apply to any PUD, and he's saying that he has a concern with that.
Could we amend the motion just to say that we consider this a site-specific? If it's for ULDC, it would be site-specific only.
You could say that would be your preference?
That would be the preference.
Or recommendation?
Does that sound good, to accept, to approve the application with the change to that this would be, if it goes to ULDC, it would be a site-specific amendment?
And that'll fly?
I think that's fine.
Site-specific to this, and that's.
That would be your recommendation?
Our recommendation is to have it site-specific only for this application with the ULDC, Unified Land Development Code.
Okay, so that is the revised.
LDRAB.
That is the revised motion. Sam? Sam continues his second. Okay. Any other further discussion on this motion? John?
No, it was answered.
No?
It was answered.
Good. Anything to my left?
So for clarification, because we do have properties in our area still. So somebody comes, a developer comes forward and they want to do a PUD, and it is zoned residential. With this language change, are they just allowed to come in and say, oh, by the way, we're going to build all these homes, but it's fronting on military trail? So we're going to have 5% of commercial on military trail, which is considered part of our PUD? Is that how this works? Can he respond? Can Mr. Tuma?
May I address the board?
Please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I guess, good morning still. Yes, sir. First, let me just address a couple items that brought up. First thing, the way the code works today, PUDs, 1% of the land area today is allowed to be commercial. The privately initiated amendment that we submitted was for 5%. This project, though, is a 2% increase for commercial. Instead of 1%, we are requesting it go 2% within PUDs. That's what our project is. The privately initiated amendment is 5%, but our project is 2%.
Who privately initiated the 5% if you're only asking 2%?
No, we did.
I don't know, this is making me nervous.
Can I, may I, I suspect, I know the zoning, I know the zoning director, suspect she's probably walking down right now. I suspect that her recommendation is going to be 2% also.
Sure. Anker? Going back to Commissioner Dagmar's comment, what she's saying is that the second part of that text amendment is pretty broad on how it's talking about roads and where these commercials can apply to. So she's saying if there's a property on military trail, then theoretically, they could have that commercial on military trail, as opposed to it being internal, which is what the current PUD standard is. So we also need to look at that and make that site-specific also, if I'm not taking the words out of her mouth. And I think I tend to agree on that one.
Okay, so the question then becomes, with the site-specific language that is in the current motion, if this issue comes up on a future project, we're going to have to deal with it on an individual basis at that point.
Only if the developer or the representative of the developer makes that request. I mean, we would be devastated if somebody came in, sorry. We would be devastated if somebody came in and said, yeah, we want to build, you know, 600 homes, you know, on this property, and it's a low density, don't worry about it. And then all of a sudden, we got commercial with it, even though there was no commercial zoning that had to go through the process in order for us to approve that commercial. They're just automatically allowed to do it.
No, I get that, but I think at this moment in time, I think we have to act on the motion before us and not necessarily, I don't know that we can hold this up in anticipation of what may occur at some future point.
I am more comfortable if we do it site-specific and we make it from the 1% to 2% instead of 5%.
Since that came to light, I would agree, and I would amend my motion to 2% and still site-specific. This just came up now that it's not, they really only need 2%.
For the motion preparer, would you also take the second line of the ULDC and also make that site-specific for the text amendment they're asking for? So the second line states, modify the location requirements for the commercial part of a PUD from limiting to internal to the PUD to allowing along the periphery of the PUD, for example, a major roadway, provided that the commercial part has access to a shared access drive.
Yeah, so what's wrong with that?
So the problem again is that when they're doing the text amendment, this will apply to every single PUD.
Oh, yeah, it should be on the main road, is that what we're saying?
No, we're saying that this also, that language also needs to be site-specific.
Yes, yes. Okay.
If I may just really quick jump in. This board does not make recommendations on ULDC changes. I think we're getting a little bit too far into that. This is the site-specific amendment before this board. There will be future meetings where that ULDC change will be discussed at zoning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. I just want to make sure we're staying within our.
No, we're just doing it as part of our recommendation.
Yeah, so I'll just repeat the motion, okay, so we all know.
Yeah, let's, at this point, let's make sure we have clarity on the motion.
And clarify it completely. We recommend approval of the application, and with the issue being and the problem being, and to clarify that we are not in favor of the ULDC amendment as it stands now, we would suggest 2% site-specific and also any other portion of that ULDC to be site-specific. And I think that's broad enough.
Yeah, that's.
So we don't go into the details of internal, external, and anything else, be site-specific to this.
Again, all we can do is send our recommendations along, but I think that sends the consensus to the board.
I don't think we can talk like that.
I just wanted to make sure that they included the staff considerations as well, because if we're recommending approval, we have to also.
With all the conditions.
With all the conditions.
Correct.
With all the conditions and the issue being the site-specific to be 2% and site-specific for any other ULDC amendment.
Any other?
I would not want this board making a recommendation on the overall ULDC amendments.
Just for it to be site-specific. Now we have Lisa Mara here, maybe she'd like to say something.
No, no, I think what I'm hearing from the county attorney and from our planning director is, we can convey our feelings, our consensus, if you will.
Right.
We cannot step across that one line in the sand here. And I think the fact that we're making it site-specific for this particular project, that's fine. We can't, we cannot prognosticate on what may or may not occur. You know, we may never see this again, or chances are we will, but you know, not the foreseeable. So I'd say, let's move this motion along with the caveats that are in place. And if we could, just let's summarize the motion one more time, so we all know what we're voting on, and then I'd like to call the question. We have someone from zoning.
Yeah. You can't make a recommendation to the ULDC that I can implement. You can, if that's what the thing is. And we also don't do site-specific ULDC changes, so that's not something that we can do. You can condition the site, you could put anything you want to or recommend for the comp plan, and that by default will limit things in the code. But we have LDRAB that makes recommendations on ULDC amendments to the board. It's a little unprecedented, unless we want to merge Planning Commission with LDRAB, which I am not opposed to. We, you know, this isn't the forum for this particular board. So I would not include it in your recommendation on the comp plan.
Okay.
Your recommendation on the comp plan should stand alone. If you want to have a separate thing that says, hey, by the way, board, we really think you should consider this, you know, planning could bring that forward separately, but it's not something that you can, you should tie in with your purview. There is no purview in the code for you to do that.
So what we would do is express your discussion in the Planning Commission summary of what happened today, that you all express these concerns.
I have a question about my motion then. Can I, can we approve the application and just eliminate that, expunge that from the conditions? Say that we don't, we're not addressing that.
We have to make sure the motion comports with our scope and does not exceed our scope, based on what zoning has just told us. So as long as our county attorney is comfortable with the language in the motion.
So my understanding is the motion is going to be to approve the project, and then you are going to express your displeasure with the ULDC, and that's essentially going to be it?
Hold on, one more time.
Hold on.
John?
I think we all have enough relationship with our commissioner. Press our concerns.
Yeah.
Okay.
We vote on the motion as it fits and press our concerns then.
Sarah, did you have something to add?
I mean, I would personally like to just make a motion to approve with the conditions staff recommended. I don't think I need to bring anything in regard to the ULDC at all. But I think there's a motion on the floor, so I don't think I can do that right now.
A little bit more discussion, and I think we should move on. Anker?
I guess this is more of a question for staff. If we recommend this, does the county automatically assume that the ULDC is going to be a part of this?
No, this action is a site-specific, we're not tying this motion into that.
I just wanted to get that clear. We're good.
Okay.
Anything else down at the end?
I suppose zoning and the county commission can make these changes. So we're going on and on here, but it really is a waste of time, because you can make a recommendation, but that's not the way this was proposed or it's set up. You got to vote on what's here. You can't vote on what you want in the future. We don't have that authority at this board.
I have to agree. Lori?
Yes, so what the attorney stated is fine, to approve the application with the understanding that we're displeased with that portion of it. You just said that.
I don't, honestly, I don't know that that language needs to be in the motion. I think the motion should stand on the issues that are presented. We can express our displeasure or concerns, we have time for, you know, later on for comments and so on and so forth, and we can, we could even come up with a memorandum, if you will, to the BCC. But I don't know that we should encumber the applicant's motion with our opinions.
Yeah, I think the intent of the board has been expressed, and it can be conveyed by staff.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just, then it's just approval of application.
Let's just approve the application.
And then we just changed it because the attorney told us that that's the proper way to do it? So it's just, I, yeah, motion, yes.
That's fine.
Motion to approve the application with the staff's conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you. Now, all right, call the question. May we have a roll call vote, please?
John Carr.
Approved, yes.
Barbara Roth.
Yes.
Lori Vineker.
Yes.
Dagmar Braz.
Yes.
Sam Calindo.
Yes.
Sarah Pardue.
Yes.
Carly Harper Larson.
Yes.
Anker Patel.
Yes.
Rick Stopek.
Yes.
Brian Stenberg.
Yes.
Barissa Laudos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much, all. Appreciate everyone. Okay, moving on now to 3A2, Bednar Market, FLUA. Let's see, who are we going to hear from today? It looks like Jay Morton Planning. Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer Morton with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I appreciate the opportunity to present the Bednar Market to you. We actually have several requests within this one presentation, so I may go over just a little bit. But anyway, I'll go ahead and get started. The property is located in the Ag Reserve on the west side of State Road 7 between Boynton Beach Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue. We have, as I mentioned, a couple of requests before you. The first one is a comprehensive text amendment to allow an agricultural marketplace and an AGR MUPD preserve. The second is for a land use change to commerce on two parcels, one is a five-acre site and one is a nine-acre site. And then third part of my presentation is the master plan and the big picture behind these requests. So again, the first request is to allow the agricultural marketplace and an AGR MUPD preserve. This may sound familiar to many of you. We were before this board in April of 2023 to initiate this proposed text language. This board unanimously supported the initiation. The request went on to the Board of County Commissioners, and the board unanimously supported initiation of the text amendment. So we are back before you today with the site-specific text language and associated land use change requests. The Bednar Marketplace is located at the southwest corner of Lee Road and State Road 7. The specific language is, one, is to put the definition that currently exists in the zoning code in the comprehensive plan. We are defining exactly what an agricultural marketplace is, and just briefly, it's a use that is accessory, incidental, and subordinate to bona fide agricultural use in the AGR tier. This language, again, is directly from the zoning code. The second sentence that we're proposing to add to the comprehensive plan is under the allowed uses within a preserve parcel. And the proposed language states, an agricultural marketplace, as defined in the introduction and administrative element, is allowed within the required preserve area of an AGR MUPD. Just a little bit of history, this site had been approved for a produce stand. The Bednar family purchased the project. They had a vision for what it could be more. They had the vision for the marketplace. And in 2012, the Board of County Commissioners held a workshop. One of the purposes of the workshop was to consider potential changes to policies and regulations that would allow for the expansion of a produce stand. Following the workshop, the Board of County Commissioners adopted ULDC amendments that actually recognized an agricultural marketplace as a use that is accessory, incidental, and subordinate to actual bona fide agricultural activities. There were no comp plan changes that were required as part of this implementation. So that's a little bit of history. That is the birth of what we now know as Bednar's Fresh Market Marketplace. And I would really commend the Bednar family as being a visionary for the vision of this marketplace. Now it's very well-known throughout Palm Beach County. The other thing I want to point. The other thing I want to point out is in the comprehensive plan, under purpose and objective of the Ag Reserve, it specifically identifies the purpose not only to preserve unique farmland and wetlands, but also enhance agricultural activities. The agricultural reserve shall be preserved primarily for agricultural use, reflecting the unique farmlands and wetlands within. I think there's nothing more focused on promoting agriculture than the Bednar's Fresh Market. This is a sign from their market. They sell locally grown fruits and vegetables that are harvested locally. They also sell honey and some nursery container plants. All of this supports the local farmer and plant nurseries. This is a place for residents that are within the Ag Reserve to go and shop for produce and fruit. This also furthers sustainability because what is sold here is grown locally, packed locally, and sold at the Bednar's Market. They also provide additional educational activities to promote farming. They have schools of busloads of kids that come to the Bednar's Marketplace. They walk the fields, and then they go to the market and see the, the produce that was grown in the, in the fields being sold at the market. They also have U Pick 'em activities. They have the pumpkin patch, which is going on today. All of this creates a sense of place, a sense of agriculture, rural lifestyle, that I think really was the vision for the Ag Reserve. And in my opinion, Bednar's Market is probably one of the best examples of agrotourism. People come to Bednar's because of the rural sense of, the rural sense of place that is created at that fresh market. And, you know, one thing I want to emphasize is the Ag Reserve has changed over time. The rules were set in place in the late 1990s, and the Board of County Commissioners, over the last 20, 25 years, has made changes to the Ag Reserve. They've made changes to uses that are allowed in the preserve parcel of an AGR plan development. In fact, one of those changes was made in about 2012, where the board decided that packing houses should be allowed in preserve parcels in the Ag Reserve. I would argue that this market is another high-value use for the farmer that should be allowed in an MUPD preserve parcel. We also get questions, you know, what can we do to support the local farmer? We want to preserve agriculture in Palm Beach County. The Bednar family is a legacy farming family, and this is something that this board and the county commission can do to help support a local legacy family farm. And, you know, the marketplace, the definition actually requires it to be directly adjacent, subordinate, and supportive of the bona fide agricultural uses that are taking place. So the second request that we have before you today is for a land use change to go from AGR to commerce on two parcels that are adjacent to the marketplace. This is an aerial that identifies the two parcels. The Bednar's own the parcel, parcel A, on the northwest corner of Lee Road and State Road 7, and then they own the property south of the marketplace. Again, both parcels have frontage on State Road 7 and are directly adjacent to the marketplace. This was the criteria that was established by staff and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet all of the criteria for being able to request commerce on this property. And I would like to note that this criteria actually gave specific location criteria. It requires frontage on State Road 7, north of Rio Grande Avenue, Boynton Beach and Atlantic Avenue, east of 441. And we meet all of this criteria. In the staff report, there was a lot of discussion about location and compatibility. Going back to the definition of compatibility, compatibility is defined as a condition in which land uses can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time such that no use negatively impacts, impact directly or indirectly the adjacent use. And when staff and the board was voting on the commerce use, there was a lot of discussion about whether commerce was compatible, a compatible use in the Ag Reserve. And commerce, the last sentence in the language states, "The new commerce FLUA will foster additional opportunities for smaller, load-trip generating, light industrial and/or employment-generating uses." So commerce has already been found to be compatible in the Ag Reserve. And I would argue that State Road 7 is the most likely location to request commerce. State Road 7 has historically been the corridor where the farming industry goes to buy their supplies, where the packing plants are located, and is a logical location to request commerce. These parcels are located on State Road 7. Also, the requests that have come before you over the past couple of years for commerce have all been along State Road 7, or these, these requests have been along State Road 7. In the staff report, it referenced the isolation or the isolated nature of these parcels. Well, before there was commerce, every request was an isolated request because commerce didn't exist. When we asked for the Homridge Nursery to go to industrial, Sunflower to go to industrial, LAS Farms to go to industrial, State Road 7 Business Plaza to go to commerce, all of those were isolated requests. Even the Solid Waste Authority is isolated. It's surrounded by land that was purchased with Palm Beach County bond money. The other item talks about the compatibility with adjacent preservation land. You'll see that both of these parcels that we're requesting commerce are, are adjacent to land that is in preserve. But I would say that the language in the comp plan already assumed that people would be coming in, asking for commerce that's adjacent to land that's in preservation. And these parcels that are highlighted in yellow all have adjacent preservation land. So rather than show you each one, I've highlighted, Sunflower, LAS Farms was adjacent to preservation land to the west. State Road Business Plaza had conservation land to the north, which was Palm Beach County land, to the east and to the south. There's comments about its location next to the fishing game wildlife land, where approximately 600 feet, or at least parcel A is approximately 600 feet from the property line of the US Fish and Wildlife Service land. Between us and the wildlife refuge, we have a 400-foot-wide FPNL transmission line. Also, the land between parcel A and the wildlife refuge is all farmland, as well as the land south of the refuge and east of the refuge. This is a view looking on Lee Road towards the refuge. You can see the FPNL transmission lines. You can see the land that was farmed on the south side of Lee Road. Keep in mind that farming, they use pesticides, they use herbicides, they can aerial spray. We're proposing a commerce use, which is a use that's in a building with a parking lot that will be landscaped and set back from the road. The second request is for parcel B, located directly south of Bednar's Marketplace. The land to the west of parcel B is in preservation. The land to the south of parcel B, although it doesn't have an industrial or commerce land use, it really functions as that. And I would argue commerce is compatible with the adjacent uses. This is a view of those two parcels directly south of the nine acre parcel. We have the Land Care business, and we have the Agricultural Land Services business. The difference between what we're proposing and these parcels, we have to go through the DRO process. We have to do a site plan. We have to have a landscape buffer. Our buildings have to be set back. Every 10 parking spaces requires a landscape island. We're consistent with the comprehensive plan and the policies established. And finally, the last part of the presentation is, why are we asking for this request? Why are we coming forward now? Well, the Bednar family is master planning their properties and doing some succession planning. I did a little bit of research to find out the status of farming in Palm Beach County. This is an article, we couldn't find anything in, in the Palm Beach Post, but this is a similar situation. It's titled, "Dying on the Vine: Florida's shriveling agricultural industry can't shake the fall of citrus or loss of land." And as family farms look to pass on to the next generation, the high cost of business is, has convinced more farms and ranchers to simply give up and sell to developers. The BCC, if the BCC approves these text and map amendments, the Bednar's will move their conservation easement from parcel A to parcel B on the marketplace. They will rezone and do a land use change for parcel A and parcel B, and they will continue to farm the land that they own and farm to the west, as well as farm land that they own and farm throughout Palm Beach County. The area highlighted in yellow is land in the Ag Reserve that the Bednar's currently farm. It's 666 acres. Between Palm Beach and Martin County, they farm just under 15 acres. I respectfully request that this board approve both the text amendment and the map amendments as part of a way that you can support and encourage agriculture in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, I think Bryce, you're up again.
Again, Bryce Van Horn with the Planning Division. I know you all read the report very carefully. Some of my presentation will be a little bit redundant, so bear with me while I get through this. Definitely going to make it as short as I can. So again, this is the Bednar Market Future Land Use Atlas and Text Amendment. Just, just to give you an overview, I know that Jennifer explained pretty much the details. But this, you know, before getting into the details that I'm going to explain to you, I just wanted to present just a, a general overview of the amendment. So the amendment involves three parcels owned by Bednar, located on the west side of State Road 7 at Lee Road. Lee Road is the entrance road to the Ochsatchee National Wildlife Refuge to the west. So of course, this is in the agricultural reserve tier. So the intent of the proposed amendment is to pursue a commerce designation on the nine acres shown as parcel B, and on the five acre parcel A. And for parcel A, this requires liberating it from the existing AGR MUPD preserve parcel status. So it's, it is currently a preserve, zoned AGR MUPD. The development area that is preserved for is the all-seasons concrete living facility on Lions Road south of Atlantic. So in order to liberate parcel A as preserve area, the applicant must replace it with an equivalent preserve area, which is proposed to be five acres of the Bednar's Market site. It's outlined, Bednar's Market is outlined in blue. So however, the marketplace use is not allowed in any preserve. So the applicant also proposes the text amendment, as explained by, by Ms. Morton, text amendment to the plan to allow the use in an AGR MUPD preserve area. So again, just a larger map here, just showing the, the two sites that are subject to the amendment. So the proposed future land use atlas amendment sites, there's two totaling 14 acres. Parcel A is the five acre south site at the northwest corner of State Road 7 and Lee Road. Parcel B, nine acres, again, located south of the Bednar's Market. So parcel A and parcel B are together in this amendment package proposing a change from AGR to CMR with an underlying AGR, so commerce with an underlying agricultural reserve, future land use. The existing Bednar Market, which is approved with an agriculture marketplace zoning use, is the subject of the proposed comp plan text amendment, as well as a required privately-initiated ULDC, which is the code, amendment to the agriculture marketplace use regulations. So there are a total of three concurrent zoning applications. I believe they started out with four, two were consolidated, two of which are for the required concurrent rezonings for parcel A and parcel B that's required by the policy for commerce flu, and one for the all-seasons CLF AGR MUPD. To delete parcel A as the off-site preserve area for that approval, and also rezone the Bednar's Market site as the replacement off-site preserve area for the all-seasons development. So the proposed replacement of preserve is dependent on the proposed text amendment. So together, the CMR sites are proposing over 213,000 square feet for light industrial. The specific text amendment, again, proposed by the applicant to allow the replacement of the all-seasons preserve area with the Bednar's Market parcel are, again, as follows. Revise the introduction and administration element of the comprehensive plan to add the definition for agricultural marketplace use. It's currently in the code only. And revise the future land use element, specifically policy 1.51Q for AGR multiple-use plan developments to allow the agriculture marketplace use within an AGR MUPD preserve So following slides, just kind of visually lay out in more detail what the current status of the parcels are and what's proposed. So this slide shows the existing future land use zoning and acreages for the various parcels. The Bednar's Market has AGR future land use with AGR zoning on the seven acres, the seven acres to the south of the market also has AGR future land use and zoning. And actually, together, those two seven acre parcels, they're not separate parcels currently. It's one tract, one 14 acre tract, and it's part of the zoning approval for the agricultural marketplace. So the county created the agriculture marketplace use in 2012, and the ULDC allowed only in a non-preserve parcel. And the Bednar Market was approved for that use as a Class A conditional use, as an agriculture marketplace in 2000, following that in 2013. That approval was tied to the overall 81 acres. That includes the preserve parcel to the west and the seven acres to the south, and allowed as a use that is accessory, subordinate, and incidental to the bona fide agricultural activity on those other properties. Parcel A to the north of Lee Road is currently AGR future land use and has AGR, again, AGR MUPD zoning as the off-site preserve area for the all-seasons AGR MUPD on Lions Road south of Atlantic. south of Atlantic. So, what's proposed? As it relates to the Bedner's Market site, comp plan and text amendment to allow the Agriculture Marketplace use in an AGR MUPD Preserve. The concurrent zoning, again, is proposed from AGR zoning to AGR MUPD as Preserve with reductions to the site and the acreage, square footage for the Bedner's Market. Again, this is proposed in order to allow the relocation of the All Seasons Preserve to the Bedner's Market site. Future land use amendment on parcel A from AGR to CMR AGR, and again, a zoning change concurrent from AGR MUPD Preserve to Light Industrial, IL, commensurate with that proposed relocation of the Preserve area. And the future land use amendment on parcel B from AGR to CMR AGR, and concurrent zoning change from AGR to, in this case, Multiple Use Plan Development for Light Industrial. One is a planned industrial development zoning district. The other one is proposed as a straight IL zoning district. So, as a first step, staff in assessing the amendment staff considered those properties surrounding the uses and the development pattern. This larger map just shows you what's going on. So, this aerial shows the sites subject to the proposed CMR Future Land Use and the surrounding land uses and the context of the immediate area. So, surrounding the site, so to the west is, of course, the Arthur or Marshall Locks Hattie National Wildlife Refuge. And that's not the whole boundary. It's 148,000 acres. That's just what I could fit on the map, close to the site off of Lee Road. To the east across is Preserve Area, county-owned, purchased with the bond money. And again, the 67 acres also owned by Bedners as part of the Agriculture Marketplace approval. It's Preserve Area for an AGR PUD from 2002. Across the street, currently Preserve Area for the Whitworth AGR PUD, that's the GL Homes Project. Depending on whether or not the board approves the ITG swap, that may end up being development area. We'll see. Again, AGR PUD Preserve for other AGR PUDs in the ag reserve, completely surrounding the north site, and the rest of it is AGR, various AGR PUD Preserve parcels to the south, which you see there in light green. So, staff's assessment of the proposed text amendment is that the Agriculture Marketplace use was already accommodated in 2012 as a use in the ag reserve tier, but was considered appropriate only in non-preserve parcels. That the proposed amendment only provides a further exception to this use that is already accommodated. So, this represents a fundamental change in policy from 2012 by allowing existing Preserve to be replaced with a retail market. There's no net gain in preserved land, so the text amendment fails to further the goal and objective of the tier of farmland protection and agricultural perpetuation. For the CMR amendment, yes, as Jennifer indicated, the sites are eligible to request the CMR because it meets the general location requirements along State Route 7. However, the proposed amendment sites would create isolated pockets of industrial adjacent or proximate to preserves, active agriculture, and environmentally sensitive lands. The intensity would far exceed that of the surrounding sites area, including the existing Agriculture Marketplace. So, overall, the proposal is not consistent with the overriding Agricultural Reserve Tier objective, which is to preserve and enhance agricultural activity, environmental water resources, and open space. So, as such, staff is recommending denial of the amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bryce. I actually had a couple of questions for the applicant, just if you could.
What's that?
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
I'm somewhat familiar with the area, obviously.
Chairman.
I think we've all been there at some point or another.
Excuse me, can we do public comment?
Oh, we can do that first, if you'd like.
Yes.
Thank you. We have one comment card from Mr. Mark Perry, if you'd like to come up and speak.
My name is Mark Perry, and I think one thing we have to remember is when the ag reserve was created, it was created to enhance and preserve agriculture. It's not to stop possibilities of farmers to expand the uses of the property. This piece that we're proposing to be able to have the marketplace on it would be on a Preserve parcel. In the past, in 2012, a farmer was not able to have a packing house on a Preserve parcel, which doesn't make any sense. So, as a result, the county commission understood that this would be something to enhance the agricultural community. This is another example. We would like to have a lot of marketplaces in the ag reserve. It'd be enhancement for the farmers themselves. So, to sit there and not permit this just doesn't make sense to me. We have so many fewer farmers now. DuBois' family's gone, Whitworth's family's gone, Pontano Farm family's gone. There are no more farmers. And this is a chance where we have another generation that's going to be coming up with the Bedners, and that's Jesse Bedner, a very good farmer. This will be something to assist him for his future also. So, please, please support this. I represent the farmer that has the property surrounding the piece, the five acres to the north side of Lee Road. She's in favor of this project. That is immediately being affected by what we're doing here, and she doesn't care. She's happy that this is happening for the Bedner family. To this very south, that is Bobby Lyons' piece, he would be supporting this also if you were to ask him. So, please understand, the immediate affected people are supporting this because it's a farming family, and that's what we want to do. That's why we're here. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, Jennifer. Thank you. Again, I have just a couple of questions. The property A, just north of Lee Road, is something that, in my experience, is sort of an overflow parking area at present. Is that correct?
They have used that as overflow parking, yes.
They've been there. So, my question then is, you know, and again, let me just state that with all the greatest respect to staff, you know, on a technicality basis, I see where staff is coming from. I kind of favor this project. So, you know, we'll see where my colleagues go, and of course, we'll have a vote in a little bit. But my question will be is, with the proposed development, where are you going to park the cars?
So, this is planning for the future, and it doesn't mean that the board approves it and next year they're going to be building on both of these parcels doing commerce.
You don't want to put that in writing, do you? So, let's assume for purpose of the discussion that you're here for a reason.
Yes. I mean, I think they'll have to figure it out, and they will, they have in the past figured it out. They own all of that land. If you look at Bedner's Market there, they own all that land west, and they, you know, they have the parcel south. They will add additional parking to accommodate the marketplace, so.
It didn't just help your cause. I mean, that is a concern because, you know, again, it's, I love the property. I think it's viable. I think it's a unique property in Palm Beach County. I think it's one of, it's a dying property in Palm Beach County. There's so few of them left. But I can't get past the fact that you do have a logistics issue, if you will, of where to put all the people.
So, they do have that parking lot in the back behind the marketplace that isn't used very often. When they have large events that they do have, they do use the property north, but they also could have access to their property to the south. You know, if that is developed, they will have parking lots there to actually be able to park cars versus parking them in the field. So, and most of the activities are weekends, so it actually would be a compatible use. Their activities go on on the weekend. If it were developed as commerce, most likely that use is a daily weekday use, so it could be, they could be compatible, and you could park the cars there anyway.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, let me start now to my left. Any questions for the applicant or for staff? Anything, Sam? Marissa? No? Nothing? Kylie? I knew, I want to hear from Kylie.
Kudos to this family and their vision for the area. And I will say that it is interesting to have a proposal for something to go on Preserve Area. And if we look at the precedent, that a packing house, a packing plant, a processing plant, a cannery adds value to a bona fide agricultural business. An Agriculture Marketplace does the exact same thing with an additional bonus, and that is direct consumer monetary exchange. I would argue that it adds a greater value directly to our area. And having participated in what they currently offer, and having a child who has had the benefit of going from the glades and knowing what grows out there to seeing what grows on the sandlands, and being actually able to ride and talk with, as I was told, Ms. Marie about how she farms, he tried a pepper raw never before. I want to see this, and I want to see the opportunity because it would permit Preserve areas for this use. It's going to yield dividends beyond the Bedner family. The other thing is, is we can't penalize, just in my opinion, their foresight in acquiring this land and seeing that they can expand their current use, park cars where they need to, right? And then have supportive commercial use around it. We could very likely be looking at a pod similar to what we see in the Salinas area around Monterey, which is exactly what is happening there. They have supportive commercial pods with agricultural marketplaces and restaurants that feature the fresh produce and meat that turn things into agricultural destinations. And we quite honestly need it. So, I fully support this project.
I mean, there is so little retail along that corridor as well. Laurie?
Staff indicated that there is no net gain of Preserve with this project, but there, I don't see any net loss either. So, we still have Preserve with the same amount of Preserve and with farming activities My farm is down the street from the Bedner's Farm Market, and I use 441 all the time. And it is wonderful to see this right now on the parcel north, there is a pumpkin patch and a limited parking because they put the pumpkin patch there this year. But there is a tremendous amount of parking along 441, especially on the weekends, and they park for a mile and a half up 441. And they, it's wonderful that they have police there, and it's wonderful that they have this market there, and I would like to see more markets along 441 if there were any Preserve parcels there for it to use. My concern is, and this is the question, if we, the Preserve here, on a Preserve, you can have a marketplace if we approve this, can it, then it can be on any Preserve, it can be asked, requested on any Preserve parcel, for example, Half Mile Road or Starkey Road, Persimmon, there's all, that's my concern because it, there is no way that this, a wonderful farm process here of a marketplace with seasonal attendance can work on Half Mile Road or Starkey Road. It would be really, I'm just mentioning those roads, but there's other road, Bob West Road, and it would just be a nightmare for people and not safe. So, if I were to vote to approve this, I would limit it to State Road 7 corridor. And if the applicant is amenable to that, I would ask that you change your request.
Absolutely. We are amenable to that. There actually is location criteria in the zoning code that limits it to adjacent to an arterial road designated on the Palm Beach County Functional Classification of Roads map, so.
That's voting, but in this, in this land use application, I'd like to see that.
Okay. We're happy to limit it to State Road 7.
Okay. Thanks, Laurie. Let me start it down with Dagmar and then work back to finish up with Mr. Roth.
Well, I am absolutely amazed at the way this is going, listening to my fellow commissioners. Do you realize that that five acres is the Conservation Preservation Easement for the Four Seasons Congregate Living Facility that we approved off of Lyons Road? Okay? Why are we going through this process if you can just take a five acre parcel and flip it over on a retail store? I mean, I'm flabbergasted, you know? I mean, if you really wanted this to happen, why didn't you go out and find another five acres and turn that into Preserve? Then I could maybe swallow this. But, you know, it is overflow parking. It is overcrowded. I'm not saying what Bedner's is doing is wrong in any, it is amazing. But when I hear all the farmers going out of business and, "Let's preserve the wetlands and let's do all this stuff for farmings," and then in the same preservation, in the same presentation, you're telling us that you want to turn this into light industrial commerce on the north and south side of the marketplace. I mean, does that really fit? Yes, this is supposed to be in the future. It's financially feasible for them to do this, but you can't have it both ways. You can't be a farmer and say, "Oh, I want to do this and the wetlands, and I'll preserve, and a sense of place, and, you know, I'm supporting the farmer, and, but I want to liberate parcel A." Okay? And then we're eventually going to turn it into up to 213,000 square feet of industrial on both sides of the Bedner's Marketplace. I mean, we're setting a precedence here to flip that five acre parcel from Conservation Preservation Easement, which is supposed to be fallow, open space, farming, equestrian. That's it, folks. You're opening up a can of worms big time because somebody else, all they have to do is come and say, "Oh, I want to change this language in the ULDC so I can do it too." I understand, they do meet the criteria of being on 441 to be allowed to do a commerce designation, but this doesn't fit. There's a really good reason why staff recommended denial. Please don't open this. Tell them to go back. Find another five acre Conservation Easement somewhere else. Don't flip this over on the marketplace. Come back and try again. Thank you.
John?
I have a question for the applicant. I don't think I'm working here. Is it this one? There we go. Question for the applicant. So, they don't have any plan or any ideas whatsoever they want to do with the light industrial? Did I miss it in my packet?
So, you mean...
So, it's approved. What do they want to do?
I mean, it adds value to the land, and it's vested for their farming family, for their succession. You know, it's preserving their rights to do commerce on that land. I mean, really today, I mean, we see the value in the marketplace. The marketplace, I think everybody would consider a gem of the ag reserve, but it meets the criteria to do commerce from that whole frontage. So, if we can't move the Conservation Easement over to the marketplace, then what that does, it limits that area to nine acres of commerce. We thought this... We thought this was a great proposal because we're preserving that marketplace into the future. And yet at the same time, we're giving value to the Bedners by giving them commerce. And commerce is already up and down 441.
I appreciate it. So we don't, you don't really have any plans for it? You just wanted it approved for future? Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Sarah?
Again, I do also think it's a gem and I also take my children there and it's, it's very popular. My only issue, I can kind, I agree, I can get on board with a lot, but the, the preserve that's set aside to use that piece is the, I, that's a really, that's the part that I just kind of stopped because if we, we set it aside for a reason and then it gets brought forth with a different application and a different applicant, it is a little hard to take issue. So I am actually taking into consideration the comments of the other side and this is a hard choice, but I will say I personally do have a ethical issue with that.
Ankar?
Steph, on your report to us, you wrote that they're doing warehouse office. Where did you get that from?
So that's in their concurrent zoning application? The two concurrent zoning applications that they have and Jennifer could probably explain a little bit more detail, but those concurrent zoning applications are required by policy when you're requesting a CMR. So those, that warehouse office is part of the zoning application.
Perfect. Applicant, if you put that into your application as warehouse office, that means you have a plan.
We're, yes, we, we're required to submit a site plan through the zoning process to, that's a requirement of the comp plan. In order to submit for a comp plan, you have to have a concurrent zoning application. So...
I understand. So warehouse office now, to me warehouse office doesn't sound like packing or any of this other stuff that was mentioned as part of the industrial uses that would make sense for this type of property. So tell me where I'm missing, what's going on?
From the request? I mean, the request, so commerce wasn't even allowed in the ag reserve until two years ago. And now that's an opportunity for this farmer to come in, invest this land for commerce while the door is still open. I mean, these farmers, they're always looking for...
My question, my question is, is I've heard application is saying warehouse office, right?
Yes.
Which is a very specific use. I've heard some other notations about what farmers need and what you would like to do over there. And I don't see where the two plans are meeting. So either I'm missing something or there's something that's wrong. So please clarify that for me.
So we don't have a specific user for either of these parcels. We weren't, you know, right now it's in the preliminary planning stage. In the use matrix in the zoning code, it identifies office warehouse as an allowable use in commerce. So we've identified that as one of the users. It could be a number of users, another, a number of permitted uses. Someone asked, what's the plan? We don't have a plan right now. We don't have an end user right now. We're planning for the future. And actually on, when they sold the development rights on that five acres, they sold that, the development rights so they could buy more farmland. So, you know...
And was there a reason? I mean, I guess because you're allowed, that's why this number of 213,000 is coming up? Because that's what's allowed by code if you do apply for the commerce zoning?
So I think that's the maximum, .35 FAR. Most likely it would be less. I've represented a lot of requests for commerce and almost everybody comes in at less than .35.
Well, thank you. I think I got my answers for now.
Barbara?
Okay. Let's please establish that we all enjoy Bedners and have taken children, grandchildren there and it's a wonderful location. This in no way reflects on their business or their business model. May I ask, Bryce, is it possible to put back the screen that says staff assessment? Because with all, thank you. With all due respect, this is much more than a staff, staff pointing to a technicality. This is an issue of well thought out and planned, uh, land use in the county and the suggestion of precedent being set going forward. If we could talk about, you know, again, I, Commissioner Bras, Commissioner Cardou, the reference to perhaps some other conservation area might help, uh, might help me to think about this a little differently. But that staff assessment says it all. If there is no specific end user, and we have no reason to doubt Ms. Morton on that, then I suggest that Bedners and their wonderful business model come back to us at a point when there, there is something and we'll look at it and at that same time identify an area to, you know, for conservation. I can, I cannot accept this. I will be voting in opposition.
You know, one of the things that I enjoy about sitting on this commission is learning. And despite my comments earlier, I have learned from Commissioner Bras historical information that I was not aware of until just a few minutes ago. Likewise, from Commissioner Roth. So, and to echo Commissioner Roth's comments, yeah, we all love Bedners. Everybody has a fun time there. I love taking my granddaughter there. It's, it's, that's not the issue here. And I have to now agree that based on what I've learned about that five acre parcel having been previously assigned to another role, that does create a conflict, that does create an issue. And inasmuch as the Bedners are saying, or Ms. Morton is saying on their behalf, that they have no imminent plans to build, there's nothing that's going to happen today, tomorrow, next week, next, next year perhaps. Perhaps time dictates review. And maybe it is something that needs to go back and look at and, and see what else can be, can be developed here. So having said that, is there a motion on the floor from one of my colleagues to move this issue? Commissioner Roth?
I move that we recommend denial on this proposal.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Roth. All right. So now discussion, and I'll just start off. Are we just, you want to leave it as a flat denial? Do you want to put any caveats in there for coming back or leave that up to the applicant at, at their discretion?
Motion stands as, unless someone suggests something, I would listen to it, but...
Okay. All right, let's move.
I don't think that it's been asked before, but of course we're in discussion right now.
Yes.
And then we can table and then we can inquire.
Yes.
Right? Okay. So what, what we haven't heard, but we have already had a question asked, will you confirm that something will only be limited to southern? When you look at the map, Bryce, if you could bring that back up, the, the applicant does own land directly behind and they talked about putting the parking lot there. What if that five acres that everyone's so concerned about and thinking that it won't be preserved in bona fide agriculture? You've got to see the fact that you've already allowed packing plants, man. They got just as much, they got just as much parking space as an agricultural marketplace. And they aren't located all the time where the farm is at, but okay. All right? If you allow this, what about the land that's owned behind that? Could you switch the preserve area onto that property as a caveat? Is that something we want to explore? Table the question and ask the applicant?
Question is staff. I believe that property is already conservation preservation easement.
Yeah.
All of it.
Yes.
Surrounding it.
Okay. Is there additional land that the Bedners own? That's not.
Well, that, that would be my question as well. Is there, is there an applicable parcel that can be allocated as preserved land?
I don't know, but I will say that whether, so we have that five acres where we have the conservation easement on it right now. And it seems like that's the concern of this board, that we're moving that conservation easement from that piece to the marketplace. We can move that conservation easement tomorrow. We can file an application and we can move it off of that piece to another five acres in the ag reserve that's unencumbered. So I think the question really is, should the marketplace be allowed to have a conservation easement? Not can we move that five acres to that conservation area? At least that's, that's the way I see it. And we are planning for the future. This is a future land use map amendment for the future, not a current land use map. It's future, so. So I don't, I don't know if that can be moved, but it, it can be moved through the zoning process if, if they decide to.
Commissioner Bras, you have a comment?
Well, like I said, they can come back in the future. You know, it, it's just, you know, it's all conservation preservation easement and the Bedner family has benefited financially already from all of these parcels. And all we're doing is saying, don't set that precedence. That five acres is already for another project that we approved and let them go find another five acres and come back again. Again, staff recommended a denial on a few levels, okay? Not just the five acre flipping it over onto a, a retail, you know, farmer's market, but also they didn't feel that commerce was really appropriate at this location, being the entrance into the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge. You know, so there's more things to this than just, you know, I say, go back, let's find another five acres and try again, but for now this just doesn't seem appropriate. It is not appropriate.
Commissioner Beniker, had a point?
Yeah. I, I see that they're exchanging one preserve parcel for agricultural land within the agricultural reserve and that is allowed, correct? Correct. Okay. So does anybody remember Barbara Alderman? Raise your hand if you remember Barbara Alderman. That was many years ago, yes. I was there when they changed the preserve parcel to allow the, to allow the packing plants on preserve parcels. And Barbara Alderman stated, well, you know, if you allow a packing plant on it, then you lose a pepper field or something like that. And she, she said that, but that was one point. But in the end, they helped the farmer and they, they allowed packing plants on preserve parcels. This is a similar situation. I, I don't think this is going to happen all, this should not happen all over the agricultural reserve, but being here on a, on State Road 7 and they do have the right to ask at any time for the CMR designation. They don't have to have a complete plan. You have to, the, the rule is at the final, at the final approval, there needs to be a concurrent zoning application so that we know what the finality of it, what's going to go there. But of course, things can change and they can come back again, but there's nothing, no, they don't have, the owner doesn't have to have somebody ready and prepared to develop. So they do have the right to ask for that. That's all my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Roth had a comment and I'll come back to Dagmar. Did you have something, Barbara?
No, I just said I'm not changing the motion at this time.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I don't understand why the word packing plant is coming up. My understanding is you're allowed to build. It's a Right to Farm Act. You know, you can build a packing plant, okay? We're not talking about packing plants. We're talking about industrial commerce warehouses and offices. We're not talking about packing plants. Thank you.
To clarify, it was part of both Jennifer's and the staff presentation that, that the ULDC was changed for the ag reserve in 2012 to permit packing plants because previously they were not allowed to be used on preserves. So we already have a precedent to establish that we can change the definition and allowances for use on preserve areas. And it was changed, I believe it was in yours, for the, for a bona fide agricultural business, which means that they have to be appropriately actively in production and farming, okay? Under the state code, which is where bona fide agriculture is at, that is referenced in, in most of the counties in the state. And that means that the tax rolls have to represent actual production activities or coordinating activities that fall within that. So that includes their logistics, their track, uh, storage. And it was absolutely, and I'm going to use a very tough term here, asinine, that until 2012, we didn't have the ability for the AGR preserve areas, which are there to enhance active bona fide agriculture. The issue that, and, and I completely, I completely understand, okay? Swap. But when we're looking at each individual request, it is appropriate for an agricultural marketplace to be placed on preserve ground. We have already established in 2012 that if we can add value to bona fide agriculture, we allowed it. An agricultural marketplace allows value to come directly from the consumer to the farmer unencumbered, whereas packing plants may have shippers, brokers, and et cetera. People don't go to packing plants. I don't allow my customers to have active sale of cash sales because of food defense and food security issues. This allows unencumbered discussion and conversation. I understand where the hangup can be at, and that's where I'm trying to approach it, is there are different requests in here. And I feel like we can come to an agreement on this. We've already looked at southern being there. I understand that the, there's, there's some other areas that are in the ag reserve that I will agree. They don't have the faculties and the structure and the ability to be able to do it. I can tell you there is a reason why this is pretty much the only agricultural marketplace that's active on State Road 7 right now is it's a hell of a lot of work. Your, most of your farmers are scared to be able to do this because it takes an actual family of concerted effort to be behind it. You're not going to have farmers in the ag reserve lined up to do this because it took them, I think, 15, 20 years of planning to think about it and bounce around their family before they even came to it. I think we need to look at the fact that we're gonna, we're gonna encumber agriculture here. And since they have this land and they have the ability to swap it at any time, it's best that we go ahead and address it.
May I?
Yes. Commissioner Roth?
Thank you. It, it really helps and thank you, Commissioner Harper Larson. And gee, I wasn't going to use that word swap, but since you did, how can I resist? We are very familiar with areas and parcels of the ag reserve. There are different types of agricultural use. There are, there are horse farms. There are other areas on roads that are clearly not able to bear the traffic, the load that, that State Road 7 can bear. I go back to that screen from staff assessment that says it all. We don't know what that commerce use, what that application will finally come in to look at, to look like. We, we simply don't know. And we also don't have an identified piece of land not to be, not to be swapped out in North or West County, but in the area. And I, I stand by my motion and that is a motion to deny.
That was my next comment. Let's call the question at this time. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call for denial?
Well, just to clarify, this is a motion to deny without any changes to staff's recommendations.
John Carr?
Yes.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vinegar?
No.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes, to deny.
Sam Caliendo?
No.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes.
Carly Harper-Larson?
No.
Ankur Patel?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Reluctantly, yes.
Brian Stenberg?
Yes.
Barissa Ladas?
No.
Motion passes seven to four.
Again, I thank the applicant, and I thank staff for their presentations. I thank my colleagues for their passions. I think we all agree that this is something we want to see back again in some revised form so that all the parties can get what they're seeking here. You know, this is kind of a bit of a tougher issue than most, but I think it'll be back here, and I think it'll be back here in a form that will meet with the approval of this commission. So again, thank you all. So now, let's move forward to regular agenda items. We have item 4A1. This is the Central Park Commerce Center text initiation. I guess we will hear from... Is Maria?
We'll have the applicant. This is a privately initiated text amendment.
Oh, so we're not going to hear from Maria today?
Maria will be second.
Ah, where am I looking at? Oh, never mind. I beg your pardon. PBA Holdings.
Yes. Good morning, still. Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studio on behalf of the applicant, PBA Holdings, Inc. As I move through this presentation, which is for a privately initiated text amendment, you will definitely recognize a lot of the graphics here from previous presentations Our request before you today is to... For considerations to start the Phase 1 process of a text amendment to the plan for the expansion of the limited service area, LUSHA, for the Glades... For the Central Park Commerce Center within the Glades Area Protection Overlay, or GAPO. The request includes revisions to various policies and maps, Policy 18C and 3385, to increase the acreage of the LUSHA to incorporate the subject site, revise the map series to reflect the LUSHA increase in acreage, and revise a note on Table 2 within the plan to include the increase in acreage of the Economic Development Center land use within the GAPO, which was previously heard by this board and approved by the Board of County Commissioners for the MUPD that's in place right now. The location is on the north side of Southern Boulevard at 20 Mile Bend as a form of reference. As I mentioned, and you'll see as we go further through the presentation, we're referencing a maximum amount of acreage to be included in this text amendment. The 138.31 acres you see here was the subject of a very similar request back in 2016, which was approved. We are located in the GAPO, and it allowed the designation of LUSHA to be placed over this land area, and allowed for the Economic Development Center to be permitted within the GAPO west of the L-8 canal, limited to a certain acreage maximum. What we're requesting today is the applicant does own the 64.64 acres south of the existing MUPD approval, and we are asking to incorporate that into the LUSHA and into the land use designation, which will be the subject of a future land use plan amendment that will come back to you with, hopefully, the Phase 2 of this request. The reason we're putting a maximum, and the acreage is somewhat flexible at this point in time, is the applicant is negotiating with South Florida Water Management District for acreage they own in the area adjacent to this project. This area is not included in the reservoir area. It's almost a remnant parcel here that's not being utilized right now, and should those negotiations come to fruition, the next time you see this request, there'll be additional land area in the text amendment request. Just a form of... To show you where we're at in regard to solution, the GAPO, here is the existing approval. The GAPO covers this area currently. I know you saw the application earlier today that is proposing to extend it to the east. The LUSHA currently covers that area and our current approval within the GAPO west of the canal. And again, what we're proposing is to potentially increase the land area, and we would not be going any further west within the GAPO either. Surrounding uses in the area, the existing approval shown here, Arden to the east within the GAPO and approved for 2,334 units. To the west of us is the FPNL facility, which back in 2016, we were referencing that as the line in the sand. Obviously, that is not going anywhere, and we are not proposing to go west of that area. Again, the South Florida Water Management District owned property within the area. And here is a representative photo of the existing facilities of FPNL to the west and some of the land area we're talking about now. This is a Google map showing you the existing uses on the 64.46 acres. We're going to be working with staff as we move through this process to allow those to continue until such time as the excavation of the aggregates mining operation ceases or they elect to go ahead and redevelopment with the uses allowed in the EDC. There is a large berm there and existing landscape material along Southern Boulevard. Little bit of history, back in 2016, this acreage was removed from the mine approval, which we would be doing as well for the 64.46 acres in the South Florida land, if that actually ends up being included. And ordinance was adopted in 16 to amend the text to allow the land use and designate that area. The land use will be changed from RR10 to EDC. The GAPO policies in the plan do not allow residential development at all west of the canal. In 2016, then, we rezoned to MUPD, and back in 2018, we came in and amended a commencement of development condition within the land use ordinance to extend it. As part of our next request, we will be asking to delete that condition because we have been deemed compliant, and the county has determined that condition has been met, so it's no longer required to be included in the ordinance. Just as... And I know this is in your staff report very quickly. It's been a long day. Again, we're just, at this point in time, putting an estimated acreage of the increase to the area west of the canal for the LUSHA maps and the objectives. Same thing for the Policy 3.3A, just putting in an acreage there for a holding point at this point. And then the table within the plan, again, same thing. We're proposing to increase the Economic Development Center, and it was tied to a specific acreage, so we'll have to amend that as well. In summary, this is just Part 1 to initiate the consideration to go forward to the commission, and then we would be submitting a land use plan amendment, wrapping the text request in in November. So you will see that later as part of Phase 2 in the actual land use plan amendment request. We're recommending consideration to move to Phase 2, and as I mentioned, we're going to be processing all the required applications for the plan and the code requirements. Fairly short presentation.
Yeah.
Some of you may not have been on the board the first time round, but I wanted to give you some of the history. It's a logical request. It's kind of a hole in the donut. And again, we are not increasing GAPO. We're not moving further west, and it's... We're just asking for your consideration to start the Phase 1 process.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and I'm sure there will be a few questions in a few minutes.
Okay.
Now, Maria. Good morning.
Good morning, and I have to say that Joni covered probably 90% of what we were going to cover with you. So I will walk very quickly through this and then focus on the staff assessment. Okay, I will say, though, just generally, as a reminder to all of you, that text amendments are any changes to the text or the map series of the comprehensive plan, they can be proposed by staff or privately, as is this one, and the initiation must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners through a process like this. And again, that initiation does not guarantee that there will be an approval for the text change or the future land use amendment that follows. It just creates a path for that future land use amendment to be able to move forward, that could not move forward if those changes were not proposed to the text. The... Something about the board. One second, I want to make sure I cover one thing with you. Oh, yes, in terms of the schedule, just to let you know again, the future land use amendment would be analyzed in full if this is initiated, and then it would come before you in March or April of next year. Okay, then in terms of the policies, as Ms. Brinkman mentioned, that they are essentially to increase the language that is currently in the plan to... For the amount of acreage for the LUSHA. And by the way, LUSHA is a limited urban service area, which is an overlay that exists in the comprehensive plan that allows some or all urban services to be provided in areas where they normally would not be available. So the LUSHA designation does that. So this is to increase that LUSHA acreage that's permissible in the GAPO west of the L-8, and also then to increase the acreage of Economic Development Center that is allowable in the GAPO as well. It does not, as Ms. Brinkman mentioned, amend any of the boundaries of the GAPO. With that change, then, the amendment... Future land use amendment would be submitted and would go forward if the text amendments are initiated. And I know she did cover most of the history, and what she did not cover, Bryce covered, I think, with the Lake Haven Amendment, but just generally speaking, the LUSHA was approved on the east side as part of that annexation prevention strategy back in 2004 because of concerns of Wellington annexing north of Southern Boulevard and increasing densities there and further west into the EAA. The area west did not get its LUSHA until it's the 2016 amendment that added the 138 acres for the LUSHA and the Economic Development Center for the purpose of the Central Park Commerce Center, which was intended to accommodate uses like a data center and other light industrial uses in that area as a way of balancing land uses in that central western communities area, as well as provide employment opportunities for the Glades area. The individual policies and other changes, map changes, and the table change are outlined here, as Joni also mentioned, and she described. The up-to language is there because of that 10-acre piece at the northeast corner. If that is acquired and the amendment comes in for the whole property, as you can see, it's essentially a squaring off of the current approval. Now, in terms of the staff assessment, what we will say is that the policy issues associated with this land use and this LUSHA at this location were essentially already weighted into back in 2016 when the original approval was granted by the board, and there were things like, is this an appropriate location for light industrial uses as opposed to elsewhere in the urban area of the county? Also, as I mentioned, the possibility of creating employment opportunities for central western communities residents, as well as Glades communities residents. Those were the key issues back in 2016. The board considered those. These are essentially the same issues, and initiating this amendment would provide the board an opportunity to revisit those, assess whether conditions have changed, and move forward if they saw fit. As a result, staff is recommending initiation of this amendment, and so the motion would be to initiate if your board agrees.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for my colleagues, for staff, or for the applicant? Dagmar?
I talked so much previously, I feel embarrassed to say anything now. I'm sorry. My apologies for rambling. So the existing property of the EDC that's already there, is there anything developed on that yet?
They've started development of the site, but there are no structures, if I am...
Has somebody purchased the property with an intent to build something?
I'll let the applicant address that.
Okay, that property actually has been platted, and there is an approved master plan and an approved site plan. Some of the property right now is still labeled on the site plan as future development, but it does depict a warehouse structure as well as 206,000 square feet of data center. The property, when it was platted, part of it was transferred to another owner. Part of it, the data center part specifically, also is still retained by PBA Holdings. So we'll be coming forward with consent from all those property owners when we move forward to process the applications.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it makes sense because you're fronting on Southern Boulevard, and you're kind of squaring it off, but, you know... Anyway, I'll save my comments for another time. Thank you.
John, anything? Sure. Sarah? I'll go now. To my left? Nothing coming up here? Oh.
I have a question.
Yes, Laura.
Boy, I could not find the owner of that Economic Development Center parcel at all on the property appraiser's office. I could not find... It comes up, no information on this parcel. I don't know why, but I... So who is the owner of that parcel?
They created an entity... Well, there's two owners. Palm Beach Holdings is still owners of the data center portion of the facility. The reason that's happening, and I have been trying to deal with the property appraiser's office, and they have not been very helpful, that property, as I mentioned, has been platted. And as part of the plat, different parcels were created, and an entity was created, and I think it's West Palm owner, you know, one of those nondescript names...
Chalkor.
...which purchased the warehouse parcel, but the property appraiser has not yet reflected the recording of the plat or the deeds on their website, and I'm trying to get them to do that.
It would be very good for public knowledge, especially since this has come up. It's very important. The only thing that comes up is wandering Willow Way. That's the only thing that comes up when... And that's not the name of anybody's name of the street. And if you go click around it, all around it, so I identified every single parcel around that and the owners with parcel control numbers, but not that one. So this is partly owned by these... By the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
The land subject to the request, the 64.64 acres, is entirely owned by PBA Holdings, and then, of course, the other South Florida Water Management District land area.
Can you tell me where you get the 64.64 acres?
It's just from the survey.
From your survey? Okay, which conflicts with the property appraiser's office?
Because they have not shown the replatted lots.
Well, it's... Their parcel... No, no, I'm talking about the one that does have a parcel control number, the one that you're asking information on now. They say it's 64.3513 acres.
Yes, because when they platted, you see the entry road coming in there? That entry road took... Doesn't include part of the land that's going to be included in this request. It all goes back to the property appraiser not reflecting the current property lines.
Well, thank you for that information.
All right. At this point, I would ask for a motion.
Was there any public comment?
No, there were no public comments.
I'll motion. Mr. Chair, I'll motion to initiate the proposed text amendment.
Second from Commissioner Roth. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Any further questions? Okay, let's call the question then. Roll call, please.
John Carr?
Yes.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vinegar?
Yes.
Dagmar Bros?
Yes.
Sam Caliendo?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes.
Carly Harper-Larson?
Yes.
Ankur Patel?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Brian Stenberg?
Yes.
Barissa Ladas?
Yes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along now, we come to Agenda Item 4B1. This is the Utilities Element Revisions. This is a... We shall hear from staff, I believe.
Good morning. David Willock with the Planning Division. Last item before you this morning is the Utility Element Revision. This is a county-initiated amendment. Okay, as Maria explained before, these text amendments require board-initiated amendment. Okay, as Maria explained before, these text amendments require board initiation, even though this is a county-initiated, this requires board initiation too. During the 2023 state legislative session, several changes occurred to Florida statutes regarding environmental regulations. These legislative changes may be, must be reflected in the utility element of the comprehensive plan by July 1st, 2024. Proposed amendment would address, first, a requirement to describe areas where intense, where enhanced nutrient reduced, reducing on-site sewage treatment and disposal systems are now required instead of conventional septic. Second, add language regarding the feasibility of providing sewer service within a 10-year horizon for developments of 50 lots and less than one acre. Third, add references to South Florida Water Management Prime Groundwater Recharge Maps. And finally, add the Palm Beach County Water Utility Integrated Utility Master Plan by reference to identify the needs of the water distribution and wastewater collection systems over a 30-year horizon. Both Palm Beach County Water Utilities and the Florida Department of Health will be involved with this. Brett Hamel from Water Utilities is here today if you have any specific questions. And staff recommends initiation, and we recommend the motion to initiate. Thank you.
Okay. Now, this, this one didn't take long.
It didn't.
That's nice. All right. Anything to my left over here from my commissioners on the left? Any questions or concerns at all? How about on the right?
Oh, you've got one here.
I beg your pardon. I'm sorry.
How many, how many property owners does this potentially impact? People who have septic systems versus sanitary sewer and...
Hi, Brett Hamel, Palm Beach County Water Utilities, Environmental Health and Safety Manager. Of the Loxahatchee area, that's, the B map goes into the Loxahatchee area, and 90% of those are over one-acre lots. There's probably 30 lots that are less than an acre. But I could get a hard number for you.
Can you use a ballpark?
30.
30, okay.
30.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else there? You good? Cool. Yes, Lori.
Yes, specifically about the people, the financial impact, we have to consider that. This is a 95-page bill, a lot to go through there. Good luck with that. But I, I remember 10 years ago with the, with the numeric nutrient water quality criteria, and that, how the federal guidelines, they tried to, to control, and they wanted to make our canals as, for drinking water, that they could actually come up to a drinking water standard, and that would just be outrageously expensive for the residents. So I'm just concerned, even if it's 30 residents, the financial impact. So I'm, do what you can to help the people, to make it easier on them, and it's good that you're dealing with Dr. Gunta. Very important to deal with Dr. Gunta on this.
Anything to my right? Dagmar? John? Nothing? Okay. All right, then, if we may, have a motion for this as well. Anybody on the left?
I'll motion, I'll motion to...
Don't jump up.
A motion to initiate this comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you, Lori. Ankor?
I'll second.
Ankor, second. Thank you. I don't think we need a roll call on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that takes care of the, the agenda items. I guess we have our, our housekeeping menu now. You all got a calendar before you for the 2024 proposed dates. I have no problems with them. I think they are what they are. I'm sure staff carefully picked these dates, you know, to work around various holidays and other conflicts and such. So do we need a motion to accept these dates, or this is just administrative?
Yeah, I think we normally take a motion.
Shall be it. I will move.
Second.
Second from Sam? Thank you. All in favor of accepting the dates?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Anyone opposed? Thank you, good. Okay, now we come to election of chair and vice chair. I'll just say at the outset that it has been my privilege to serve as chair for the past number of months. I was, I was selected as vice chair before, under Spencer. Spencer unfortunately had to resign due to, due to health issues. I hope the meetings have been efficient. I try to keep them, you know, moving along, but at the same time, you know, I want to encourage discussion and, you know, let everybody have their say, whether it's an applicant, a commissioner, staff, et cetera, and keep everything in a respectful manner. So, so I thank you for, you know, for the, you know, for the time here. Commissioner Roth.
May I make a motion for chair?
You just need to make a nomination.
A nomination, not a motion, a nomination, thank you. And am I to understand that because Chair Stopek came in, he would be eligible to be nominated for a full term? How has that been deter, I, I know that we have been limited...
I, I would prefer that you nominate someone new for the chair. I have not considered that issue. The ULDC says that you can't have somebody serve consecutive terms as the chair or the vice chair, and he served the term, so...
Even if it is not a full term?
Right, but I, like I said...
Yeah.
So in order to keep it simple, I think, let's just, and make sure we're on the level.
Who hired this guy? No.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, because this is an interesting situation, you know.
All right, well...
Okay. Thank you.
Well, then, in a point of clarity, it's been a pleasure. You know, you could all return the swag I left underneath the desk. But having said that, it was my intention to nominate Ankor Patel as vice chair, but I will now nominate Ankor Patel as chair. I, well, let me just preface it as saying that, you know, in my, in my time on this commission, I find that he's, I don't think you've missed a meeting, that at least, not that I've not been present at. I think you're always prepared. I think you bring a lot of insight. I think you bring a lot of knowledge, and, you know, I think you'd make an excellent chair. So I shall nominate you.
Can I just ask, does he have to pass the gavel to me?
Sure.
For that nomination? Okay.
Must I?
Yes. Pass the gavel to me to make the nomination.
So passed.
Okay.
Wait, now I'm, now I'm confused.
Just remake the nomination, please.
Yeah.
So, are we voting on Mr. Patel?
There's got to be a second to the nomination.
No, no, there does not need to be a second to the nomination.
Oh, no? Oh, then fine. Then vote, okay.
There just need to be a vote, unless there's anyone else who's being nominated.
Okay, do you accept?
I think there's a lot more better qualified candidates here, but if nobody else is chiming in, then I will accept. But if there's other candidates, then I want to see who else is being nominated. Is that an option or no?
Yes, there can be more than one person nominated.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
I do believe Lori Vineker, who has been in, in the past, and is just so knowledgeable and on top of everything, I, I, you know, nothing against you, honestly. Lori's just so knowledgeable and so on top of so many aspects, aspects of information that come before us, I'd like to nominate Lori Vineker.
Well, I'll accept the nomination only if, only if you don't want to be chair. If you, if you, if you withdraw your...
I don't think I can withdraw the nomination.
Well, I don't, I don't want it to be a vote, so if you don't accept it, then it's okay.
Oh, okay, so if I don't accept... Then it's the nomination that goes into play. All right, I'll, I'll not accept the nomination that Chair Rick put forward, for this, and I truly appreciate the confidence.
All right, well, again, you know, my, my philosophy is, I'd like to see, you know, new blood. I think the, the chair position is a moderator. I learned today from Dagmar things that I didn't know, you know, earlier on in the, in the meeting, and it affected my decision-making. So I think the knowledge base that the various commissioners have is still present, whether they're sitting in this chair, that chair, or any other chair. You know, along those lines, that's, that was my, my intention here. So with all due respect to Commissioner Vineker, who has been chair before, I believe when I first came on board, I think you may be just finishing up your chair position, and then in the absence of, you know, circumstances last year with Spencer's resignation, you know, vice chair. So again, I, I feel that I'd like to see, you know, new, new folks in the chair position, and we can all continue to still learn from each other as we, as we have our discussions and deliberations, so on and so forth.
Maybe you'd like to be vice chair for a year.
Well...
Then you could become chair. So it's okay, whatever you want to do.
I thought it was nice that he passed the...
Whatever you want to do.
...first to you, kind of, and I just thought that was nice. And your point about new blood, I thought was a very well, well-made point. I don't know.
So, having said that, where are we at? I have a 4 o'clock flight. You know, so...
Right now, then, there's only one nomination.
There's one nomination right now, you know.
All right, so there's only one nomination for chair. You know, I, I had previously nominated Ankor, but Ankor has now withdrawn, or she wishes to not to accept the nomination.
All right, fine. Rick is being very convincing. I will consider his nomination. Let's see what the chair, what the board feels.
Then I will withdraw.
What the board did.
I withdraw. I do not accept the nomination.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations for chair? Okay. All right, let's call the question. All those in favor of Ankor Patel as chairman? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Now, now may we have nominations for vice chair?
I'll pass the gavel back to you.
Oh, thank you. Do you have vice chair?
Mr. Carr has expressed interest in being a vice chair.
I could think of no one better.
Patel.
I, I think that would be excellent. Is there any other, any other nominations for vice chair at this time? Anybody want my preferred parking space out front? You just got it. There you go.
I don't think that was explained as a perk.
There you go. That's right. Along with the Dunkin' Donuts. All right, having said that, all in favor of John Carr as vice chair? Please signify. Aye? Thank you. All right, housekeeping is done. Any comments from my fellow commission members? Let's start down here on the left with Sam. Anything at all? Barissa, no? No. What about, moving along, Brian? Nothing? Nothing? Kylie?
Just as a note from follow-up of when we had the discussion about Lake Haven PUD, and then we had the Central Park Commerce Center come up, I, I think it's important that we do look at the lands that could be developed past the L-8, and the fact that that was like an arbitrary demarcation area that isn't really followed by the farming community. I'd just like to be able to see that come back up. I know that our county commissioner for our area was heavily involved in discussions with Lake Haven PUD and seeing that reformatted. I know that we want to see more economic development in that area, and I'm encouraged, and I want, I want to hear more. It makes me want to make the hour and 15-minute drive, on average, here, easier, knowing that we can see positive things throughout our county.
Thank you. Anything? Barbara?
Absolutely. I have to compliment our chair, Rick Stopek, our former chair, congratulate our new chair, very well deserved. Thank you for accepting that. But to Rick Stopek, you set a terrific tone when you came in as chair. I can't tell you how much I appreciated your openness, your willing to listen, and your, your ability to give people the opportunity to speak while not letting things go, go crazy. You did a really fine job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment.
Definitely second everything you said, and I'm not sure if I'll be able to live up to that, but I will try. We'll see what happens. I did have a comment, this is going back to what we're currently seeing. We're seeing a lot more projects coming in the rural tier, and I think my comments from last time sort of still stand. I think we need to look at zero-lot homes, and whether they're appropriate for a rural tier. You know, and I also think that we need to focus, because it was rural, it's primarily agriculture or something prior to that, green space. I think it's, we really need to, as a community, look at how we're going to maintain greenery, especially when it was previously ag or something else, so some form of green space. I would love to see the staff do something along those lines. The other, only other question, or not a question, but comment I would have is, maybe there's a way in the future to keep commercial out of the density calc. So when you do a calculation of number of units per acre, if there's a portion that's commercial, commercial parking, whatever that is, that should not be included into that calculation, because I think it confuses it slightly as to what the true unit calc is. And that would be my only comments on that.
Sarah? Anything? John? Nothing? Any comments?
I just want to thank the chair for a great year and stepping in, and been in that situation before, so good job, and thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Dagmar?
I totally agree with Mr. Patel. It is, it is, it's just wrong. I mean, we think that we're approving something, and then all of a sudden, I mean, we have a project coming up, and they're, and I don't even know, I mean, I guess they withdrew, so we're not allowed to talk about it. But, you know, they're, they're bringing in density, units to the acre, but then they're bringing in so much, you know, commercial on top of it, that we're not really seeing the true picture of what that development will look like by adding on top of, on top of, on top of. And, you know, and I'm very excited that Lisa Morrow is now our zoning director, but our intent was always, we always felt there was such a disconnect between planning and zoning. I really hope that everybody on staff and, and, you know, the parties, we do work on more planning, because I do feel we are being so reactive to so many parcels of property. And unfortunately, I thought, I found it very disheartening to see the maps in our backup material with the bid red X on it, because it's no longer viable, because now we changed it again. You know, it was a plan, it was the way things were going, but now somebody came forward and introduced some new language, and now we're just going to put an X on it and make a new picture. It's frustrating, because, you know, I'd like to see the L-8 canal be that line and that FPNL plant. That's the line, that's it. You know, let's make what we have work to the best of its ability, but we can only keep trying. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And from our executive director, anything exciting?
No.
Lunchtime? Gotcha.
Great job. Make your plate.
Yeah, no comments either.
Okay, good. And, Gavin, what you got?
Just a reminder that next month, instead of the second Friday, because that's Veterans Day, the meeting will be on the first Friday of the month, which is November 3rd.
How's the agenda look?
Light.
Light?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we'll be coming off of two BCC hearings and...
Oh, yeah, you guys are going to be traumatized. That's right.
We have a lot going on right now, so...
Everybody got their Kevlar for October 24th?
And also just to thank you for your services.
I appreciate it. Thanks, staff, for, you know, guiding me along the way. I appreciate it as well. Thank you so much.
And we are expecting that we also will have a December meeting.
Okay. Yeah, all by yourselves. Okay, anything else? All right, anything else? And a motion to adjourn? So moved. All right, everybody, have a great weekend. Enjoy.